At seven o'clock, first order of business is the pledge of allegiance. Please stand. First item is the approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Mrs. Feather makes a motion to approve, second by Mrs. Rogowski. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that passes six to zero. We will note for the record that Mrs. Friedman is out this evening. Next item is the consent agenda. Item A is approval of the minutes, regular meeting, eight twenty-two, twenty-four. The approval of minutes from the executive session of eight twenty-two, twenty-four. School bus inspection reports, eight twenty-three, twenty-two, four. Enrollment report from nine-ten, twenty-two, four. The residency-truancy report of nine-ten, twenty-two, four. Do I have a motion? Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Mrs. Vogel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes six to zero. Next is personal announcements. Mrs. Dreszek.
Good evening. I have an extensive list again this week for you. We have three appointments effective eight twenty-six, twenty-two, four. Jaden Colon, custodian at CHS. Karen Israel, custodian nights at the Transitional Building. And James Williams, custodian nights at Ashton School. We have four effective on eight twenty-nine, twenty-two, four. Julianne Gorham, kindergarten, one year only at Cumberland Hill. Katie Gould-Musick, one year only at Ashton and Cumberland Hill. Matthew LaRoche, mathematics at Cumberland High School. And Linda Snodgrass, math, grade seven, at McCourt Middle School. We have two effective on nine-five, twenty-four. Robert Costa, math essentials at McCourt Middle School. Daniel Johnson, school counselor at BF Norton and Garvin. We have three effective on nine-nine, twenty-two, four. Rebecca Cardoza, school psychologist at Garvin. Karen Donahue, school psychologist at Community. Carolyn DiManio, custodian nights at Ashton. And one effective on nine-sixteen, twenty-two, four. Kristen Bannon, dean of students at Cumberland High School. We have an appointment effective eight-thirty, twenty-two, four. Catherine Hill, paraprofessional at Cumberland High School. And we have four resignations. Effective six-seventeen, twenty-two, four, Rachel Seaver, the community facilitator, part-time. Eight-twenty-six, twenty-two, four, Caitlin Clark, school counselor, BF Norton and Garvin. Nine-five, twenty-four, Vanessa Perez, paraprofessional at Cumberland High School. And six-ten, twenty-four, Stephanie Sadler, grade six, social studies, McCourt.
Thank you, Mrs. Dreszek. Does anyone have any questions? Ms. Smith?
Just going to go back to the same question that we always ask and where we are on open positions and filling and how it all stands.
We have five open positions currently, all of which are being covered right now internally. You're welcome.
Mrs. Dreszek, Mrs. Dreszek, sorry. How are we set for the core positions at McCourt that we were trying to fill?
Every position at McCourt Middle School was filled this year.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Next item is the report out of executive session meeting. Report out of executive session from nine-twelve, twenty-two, four. Report out of executive session votes, there were no votes taken. I'd need a vote to seal the minutes of the executive session. Motion to seal by Mrs. Rogowski. Second by Mrs. Feather. All in favor? Aye, passes six to zero. Thank you. Next is the superintendent's report. Dr. Thornton.
Good evening, everyone. First up, Mr. Chandler. You may have heard, watching the news, that triple E is in the news. And I have Mr. Crowley here to update you all on how we're handling that. Mr. Crowley?
Thank you, Dr. Thornton. Good evening, everybody. We received guidance from the round of Scholastic Week late last week on a policy from RIDO about precautions that can be taken. We have asked our coaches to wrap up our practices by six-thirty, no later than six-forty-five. A week ago it was seven, seven-fifteen. We're moving them up as the sun sets earlier. We have provided repellent to all of our programs. During contests, during games, we have repellent on both benches. Starting tomorrow evening at football, we will also have repellent available at the ticket counter, so people walk in if they would like to spray. They're allowed to spray to come in. I have been consulting daily with multiple school districts, including our bordering towns. And right now, we are currently all following the same policy. We are currently not altering any game schedules as logistically, transportation, officials, facilities. That doesn't warrant us moving anything at this point in time.
Thank you, Mr. Crowley. Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Crowley, has there been any talk about spraying any of the fields either by the town's rec department or by us to try to mitigate?
I've been in touch with Mike Crowley. We did talk briefly at one point in time, and we're still in conversations about what steps can be taken.
Okay, thank you.
And next up, as you may recall, we approved this concept of cameras on our buses through very mobility. And that's finally coming to fruition. We'll be starting the program on or around November sixth. Just to kind of recap, our buses, all twenty-six buses will be armed with a camera. And essentially, the cameras run around this location. And should someone try to pass a bus, it would activate a picture. And that is read by the folks at the police station, and tickets are issued if it's in fact a violation. So that starts November sixth. We'll have more communications with the community over the coming weeks through the town and the school website. So that's coming soon. Question on that.
Dr. Thornton, I just want to reconfirm too. The cameras do not activate until the arm comes out or the stop sign comes out on the bus. Is that correct? It's not, like, it's not available at all times. It's only activated at that time.
Exactly correct.
Thank you.
Next up, just a quick plug for, it's that time of year for vaccinations. Our 2024 schedule, Wednesday, October nine, four to seven. The thirtieth, four to seven, and the seventh, eight to ten-thirty. And then the nineteenth, you see that, four to seven. And any questions? Also, we may have the COVID vaccine as well and the flu both, so it really depends on just what they have available at that time. So last year, we had both available. So we'll have that announced more, more often, but it is coming up now. We have that, that cycle of vaccinations. So I want you to know that. Next up-
I'm sorry, Dr. Thornton, the vaccinations are basically supplied by Department of Health, correct?
They are.
Okay, so we get whatever they give us?
Yes. Next up, we opened, and before I go to the food service, you know, we had a great opening. I want to thank, thank the admin, the teachers, the ICSI staff. A real smooth opening, also considering we moved to preschool, we moved community school, and still we had a real smooth opening. If I wanted to cover some different areas for you, if I could. First, food service, we changed vendors to Chartwell's, as you know. And I've been going around in my travels, asking kids about the menu. How is it? And high school, I had some good reviews. They liked what they were eating. One student did say for an A+, he wanted his buns grilled, but he was, he was happy. Coming soon, in this fall, the high school still would be a chicken rotisserie machine, homemade pasta maker, and also pizza dough, also made locally here. So that's all coming. So, so far, also, I was at McCourt the other day. They served, I think, pork tenderloin and kale. That's also different, I think, a different kind of menu you're seeing here. So, yeah, so, so far, so good. I'll keep you posted on that.
Mrs. Rogowski?
Sorry, just really quick. We're probably going to talk about this in my committee meeting, but do you know if all of the recycling programs that were implemented last year have continued with the new food service?
That was a point we made with them, especially Garvin as our leader. Yes, we are doing that. Thank you, Mike. Next one. So busing, as you know, or recall from last year maybe, we have twenty-six large buses, ten mini buses. A lot of the same runs, couple runs differently, obviously, with community coming up here. Essentially, it all is kind of flowing the same, same way. Couple of hiccups still with a couple of special ed runs we're working on, but overall, a pretty good opening for, for busing in terms of the whole fleet getting from point A to point B. So that's an ongoing discussion. As you know, Ms. Smith has a question.
Dr. Thornton, when can we expect to get that, the bus schedules given to the school committee so that we can start to review them in order to approve them?
Yeah, you would have that for the next meeting. All right. And then, enrollment. I always talk to you about enrollment, so I'll give you the update. So it does fluctuate. Right now, we have twenty more students than last year. Last week, we had forty more than last year. What happens is you scrub your enrollment. Some kids don't in fact go here. Some kids don't actually attend, but we're plus twenty from last year. You may have recalled, we were way down elementary. Now we're getting back up there. We're only, I think, twenty-five less than last year. We're up like sixty or seventy less than last year, a few weeks ago. So there are more Ls coming in. High schools, I'm sorry, the middles are where the kids are coming in. We're plus twenty-five at, at McCourt and plus ten at North. So that's, that's good. High school is on the plus side as well. There are plus three. So overall, we're plus twenty. Let it see more still, but I would like to have more enrollment, but it is trending positive still. So that's, also, to give you some numbers for the schools. BF's at three-seventy-two right now, and just think forward. When you build a new BF, it'll hold five-seventy-five, to give you a sense of how we have some capacity there. I often talk to you about how we build something, put on an addition, right, and then we kind of find out we're kind of getting kind of crowded again. So I'll give you a sense of that here. Garvin, the capacity, they say is around four-thirty, four-thirty-five. We're at four-twenty-four. Cumberland Hill, I'm sorry, Community is at five-forty-six. Community's five-forty-six. They're up here this year. Cumberland Hills at four-sixteen, once again, can hold around four-thirty, four-thirty-five. Ashton, they're at four-twenty-nine. Once again, they can hold around four-thirty-five or so. So they're all pretty much at their capacities in terms of what we have there. High school is interesting. High school is at fourteen-forty-three. Going back to nineteen-seventy-two, I think they held a lot more than that. I think they were way up there. I know you folks were in high school in the early seventies, but we held a lot more. We actually had double sessions at the high school. So high school can have a lot more space. Also, in terms of spreading out, this is our last year of sharing spaces. My community goes back to the new community. For the first time in several years, the second floor of the trans goes back to the high school. So that should be a more capacity at the high school starting next year. So I want you to know about that with enrollment. Construction. We have a preschool center. We have new sign, the preschool this year is at Community, as you know. It's the new section of Community. And over here, we have the reception area. We have a classroom. Here we have the principal's office. And here we have the entryway. So it's a nice, nice transition for the preschool. And to give you a sense of what's happening this year during the summer, we finished their space. We had some bathrooms. We had some enhancements in the trans building. So when they come back for the permanent home, it's all set for them. So that's this summer. So the preschool is up and running over at Community School. The trans, I wanted to show you this before and after. This is the girls' locker room. That's what it was when we started. And a credit to Tim McGrath, Will DeJesus, this was their, their project, and they really turned it around. This is the grade-five classroom right now, what it looks like upstairs. That's grade five. It has split units for heat and AC. It did a real good job transitioning from a locker room to a classroom. So I wanted to show you that. It was a lot of work internally. A quick story on that. Will DeJesus and his team, they had to pour cement to fix the flooring issues. They hand-carried up bags of cement and mixed it up in the location to get it done. So a real credit to Will and his team to, to do this work. Next slide, please. There was an issue last year. We identified, myself and Mr. Shaw and the mayor. This is the walking path behind Cumberland Hill. It goes to the Navigant Bank area. It was kind of not, not in the best shape. And also, we had a problem with kids going down the path and then having to kind of navigate cars coming in possibly for parent drop-offs. So now, with the help of Mr. Shaw and the mayor, we looked at new paths, and that curves in, and that goes behind the basketball court. And we have now a key fob in the back of the building to get them in. So the walkers now don't go anywhere near any vehicles coming in. It's a nice path around. That's a nice enhancement. We did it at Cumberland Hill. Also, here, we did take away those stairs. You remember before that we have a problem over there, so those were taken away as well. Ashton was our, our big project this year, and here it is. This is the new center island area with parking. This is a new look just of the front of the building, and there's the new addition with the building. So really, a great job. We really couldn't be happier. Next slide. Here we have the main office. Here we have a conference space. Here's one of the common areas. Another common area, and that's just a look at the hallway. Nice, clean look, right? We have just the lighting, the flooring. Everything is really, really sharp. Our credit to Colliers who's here tonight. Thank you, Colliers. And also Albor Construction, just for a great job. It's always a challenge, I think, to, you know, get all the work done at, at the exact time, but really, a great job. Next slide. And here we are once again. This is a classroom space. Another classroom space over here, and you see a bathroom. The one area left we have is the stage. The stage is done. We need to have the rails come in, the rails, and then just the, up top, the paneling goes in up top on the stage. So that'll be ready for the grand opening. We're shooting for middle of October for the ribbon cutting. So that's the idea, waiting for the stage to get fully operational, but it looks really sharp. And then McCourt, we did some work over here at McCourt. In case you didn't, I really haven't talked about it too much, we did the office over. Now, if you walk into McCourt, there are two sets of doors, not one. We have that, that kind of like secure vestibule. We have the entryway. We have the slot to put your items in. And this is the office. If you walk in the office, it's a whole new look. New ceiling, and two new office spaces over here behind, behind that wall. That was all redone. That was actually done with funds from the town. That was a town initiative from the mayor's office. And last but not least, the wellness center needed some work, and we did that as well. The gym floor is tired and just needed some work, and we had some water damage. We did the floor over. It's been many years. We did all the painting over. You see now we have the anchor, whole new look. That's three coats of poly, one to go. I think it's in October we're putting that last coat on. So it's a nice, clean look. We're also, the bid's out to fix the roof, so, you know, we can take care of all those issues. Also, Mr. Crowley lost his office. We gained a space for the students to, to work out. We did new flooring in both these locations. The machinery is still coming in, the new lifting machinery, all that type of stuff. That's kind of coming in. So I wanted you to know. Mr. Crowley has somewhere to go. It's just not where he was. He's been relocated. So that's a nice, nice enhancement. And it's beginning. BF Norton has begun. Tomorrow, if you drive by there, if you zoom in, can I zoom in, Mike? We can't zoom in. I don't want to do that. There are sticks in the ground. Those sticks are where they dig holes tomorrow. They dig test holes in the ground. And they dig a test pit to see what kind of dirt we have over there. They fill all the holes in when they're done, but that starts tomorrow. It's five to ten holes, based on what they find. So that's the first step in the process to building a new BF. So we have begun at BF Norton. So, that's okay, Mike, you can zoom in. Trust me, there are sticks there in the ground. So happy to answer any questions on construction. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Thornton. All right. Next is the reports of standing committees. First is the fiscal management subcommittee update. Mr. Collins.
Thank you. The fiscal management subcommittee met this evening. We have two old resolutions. We have seven resolutions for the full committee, and we have payment on the bills. Dr. Thornton already addressed the, the improvement in food quality and bragging about that. So that's it. Quiet night. Thanks.
Thank you. Policy and procedures did not meet mainly because of the primary taking place. Achievement and communications did not meet as well. Meeting on the twenty-fourth for achievement. And District Health and Wellness, Mrs. Rogowski.
The District Health and Wellness Committee will have their first meeting on October tenth. And I just want to do a quick reminder out to all parents with school starting. Free and reduced lunch applications are available. There are many people who would qualify that do not take advantage for a variety of reasons. If you need to fill one out, if you need help filling one out, please reach out to your school, and they can direct you to people to help you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is the public hearing. Item A is the reading of new policy, which is the second reading. H-15, availability of feminine hygiene products. And item B, which is the reading of the amended and reclassification of the policy, L-three surveillance policy, formerly E-one camera surveillance. And I would just ask that those be read into the record. And if anyone would like to make a comment, if anyone would like to make a public comment regarding either of those two policies, now would be the time. Seeing no one, we have old business. First is the discussion and/or vote to approve construction manager at risk for the new BF Norton Elementary School recommendation submitted by the Building and Renovations Committee. Dr. Thornton.
We have Colliers here tonight to discuss that. Mr. Chair, Anne-Marie?
Yes, hello. So I'm here for the construction management at-risk services for the new BF Norton Elementary School project. So we received six proposals, which the building committee reviewed their qualifications and ultimately interviewed the top three. During the meeting on August twenty-ninth, the building committee recommended that the award go to Consigly Construction for the construction management at-risk services. So the motion would be to approve the construction management at-risk services for the new BF Norton Elementary School to Consigly Construction in the amount not to exceed four million, five hundred, seven, seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven dollars, which is based on the forty-point-eight million dollar construction budget. We do have Corey Panero. He is a project executive from Consigly Construction here this evening. Corey, would you like to say a few words?
Welcome, Corey.
Thank you. First off, thank you to the committee for having me. We are extremely excited about this opportunity. You got a great team in Colliers and AI3 and their consultants, and we're excited to join for this honestly transformational project for the, for the town. So, thank you.
Would anyone like to make a motion, or does anyone have a question? Mrs. Smith, Ms. Smith? Mr. Collins? Ms. Smith?
I just had a question. And overall, and I know yourself, Mr. Figueroa, you are on the building committee. So could you give us some highlights of where the choice came from and the standout things that made the difference in the, in the vote?
Sure, definitely. During their interview, I would say the Consigly Construction team, their presence, their qualifications, their experience, they're ready to go. Also, their experience working with the design team and their availability just kind of outstood from the rest of the competitors. Also, their evaluations, the recommendations, and their fee were pretty much in line with industry standards. So it was pretty much a clear choice, in our opinion.
Also, Consigly, am I pronouncing that correctly? The big thing for me was that they just completed a project or are in the process of completing the project, which is very similar to the BF Construction, where they are building a new building, actually closer than they would be building a new building to BF Norton. So they have all the experience that we need for the success of that project.
That's awesome. That's a really good thing.
Anyone else? Mr. Collins?
Just a, a point. I wish you well on the project. I will be opposed to this due to the lack of union labor involved in the project. But I do wish you well. It's good, you know, a good project. So I've already told them I was going to say this. So, thank you.
Would anyone like to make a motion? Ms. Smith? Ms. Smith makes motion to approve the contract as laid out, second by Mrs. Rogowski. All in favor? Aye. All against? That tallies to five-one. So thank you very much to Consigly. Thank you, Anne-Marie, from Colliers. Next is the discussion and/or vote to approve tabled resolutions. SCP, I'm sorry?
This was taken up in fiscal. This is easy. We're going to table it again.
That is easy.
There's a lack of supporting documentation.
Okay, so for a lack of supporting documentation, we're going to table that. What is the issue with the supporting documentation? Are we just not getting the information we need from Toronto, or is it just something that's being hung up? I'll go to Mr. for that. Have to go up to the microphone, Mr. McGrath. Sorry.
We're waiting for Colliers to approve those invoices before we make payment on them.
Excellent choice. Thank you. Next is comments from the public. If anyone would like to make a comment, now is the time. You would have a three-minute window to make your comment. Anyone? Seeing none, we will move on. New business, discussion and/or vote to approve construction manager at risk for multiple school projects. Recommendation submitted by the Building and Renovations Committee, Dr. Thornton. And Marie from Colliers.
Hello again. So again, here to approve the construction management at-risk services for the multiple school projects. So the multiple school projects consist of a high school roof, the pre-K center, North Cumberland and McCourt Middle School, science labs, and also some security. So that totally, that makes up the multiple school projects. So for that project, we received about five proposals. The building committee met and had a discussion on September ninth. And based on the qualifications and evaluations, they made a recommendation to award the construction management at-risk services to Alborg Construction in the amount not to exceed one million, five hundred and six thousand dollars, which is based upon the thirteen million construction project budget.
Thank you, Anne-Marie. We have Lee Matthews here from Albor. If we would like to come up and maybe say a couple of words.
Thank you for inviting me. My name is Lee Matthews, and I am representing Albor Construction as a senior project manager. As you know, we've been in town for the last couple of years, working on community in Ashton. We're proud of that work. We hope that you are as well. We've enjoyed working in the town. Your administration is humble. They've been a great administration to work with. Particularly, Dr. Phil showed you a moment ago the entrance to Ashton. And although Nidia had a lot of input on that school, believe me when I tell you, Dr. Phil certainly put his finger on that main entrance in the area where you round about and add it some plaque. And so he's not only, you know, educator, he does have some design skills, and we've enjoyed working with the whole team. We certainly hope that you'll support us in moving forward on this project, these projects here. We look forward to working in the town. And I would be available to ask, answer any questions if you'd like. Thank you very much.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Matthews?
I guess, could you just briefly highlight what the jobs are? Just ballpark? Like, I know we have a roof. What else do we have on the list?
That, do you want to, do you want a breakdown of cost as well, or just the-
No cost, just like what are the jobs?
Okay, so the high school roof replacement, the pre-K renovations, the high school security and PA system, McCourt and North Cumberland Security and Science Labs, and then finally, North Cumberland Elevator Lift.
Thank you. I'd just like to say that, being on the building committee, it's been really a pleasure and a positive experience working with Albor on the various projects. And I look forward to this going forward, but we do need a motion to make that happen.
Motion to approve as presented.
Mrs. Rogowski makes a motion to approve. Second by Mrs. Feather. All in favor? Aye, opposed? That passes five to one. Thank you, thank you, thank you, Mr. Matthews. Next, where are we? Discussion and/or discussion of behavior incidents and expectations at Cumberland Athletic Events. Dr. Thornton.
Sure, thank you. Just really briefly, I had some reports last week of some concerning behaviors amongst adults having negative interactions with each other at the football game. So I'm looking to make it, you know, so we don't have any repeat of that. So I'm going to be increasing the security at the games. And it's my sincere hope that everyone can go to a game and not feel that they are, you know, uncomfortable, intimidated, that kind of thing. So we are increasing security, and we'll be watching out and making sure everyone can enjoy the game. I just wanted you to know that. Something we're doing.
Mrs. Feather?
Just increase in security, we're going to be doubling it. Is that-
Yes, I'm doubling it. We'll have four police officers at the game.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I have a question for Mr. Adams. Mr. Adams, considering any problems, you know, we see this all over the news across the country, really. What steps can we take to actually ban parents from attending sports games on our, in our fields, if necessary?
So that would probably be something that would require some sort of police interaction with the, with the member, meaning with the parent. with the, with the member, meaning with the parent, some violation of the school committee's code of conduct for attendees at events, or in the moment of an event, something that causes perhaps the police in this particular circumstance to say, we view this person as a threat, and we need to remove this person from the facility. How does that sound?
That sounds good, my, my question is, once all that happens, though, would we be able to have an actual, I don't know, I don't know if that has to be a court thing of just, you know, you're no longer allowed on school property?
So that's, it's really interesting.
Or town property.
So, there, it's funny that you ask this to, to tonight, because I had a question, a call, a discussion with a colleague about it, not with respect to this particular scenario of parents at games, but there is an opportunity when a person engages in behavior that would be thought of as trespass, which could include behaving in a manner at an event that is inconsistent with a normal participation in that event, so if you're acting overly belligerently, maybe violently, that could be viewed as a trespass, so there is an opportunity under Rhode Island law to get what's called a no trespass order against people, and in fact, that, that is, that is something that the school department can do, it's not just an individual that can do it. Typically, we see no contact orders between people, sometimes when there are difficult family relationships and it somehow spills into the school, there may be a no contact order in that scenario, it sometimes can be difficult for schools to navigate that, given complex relationships outside of school among families, but there is an opportunity for school departments to get a no trespass order under Rhode Island law.
Okay, thank you, let's hope it doesn't come to that. Next item is the discussion, where are we? Discussion and/or vote to approve homeschool instruction requests for the 24, 2025 school year.
To approve.
Motion by Mrs. Rogowski, second by Mrs. Vogel, all in favor? Aye. Passes six to zero, next is discussion and/or vote to approve amended and reclassified policy, L-3 surveillance policy, formerly the E-1 camera surveillance policy. This policy did have some slight, just a couple slight changes that were discussed at the last meeting, but because we weren't able to have a policy meeting this week, I asked that it be put onto this agenda just to clear our docket, really, and get this moving forward. Does anyone have any questions, or would anyone like to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith, Ms. Smith, second by Mrs. Rogowski, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All, passes six to zero, thank you. Next is the discussion and/or vote on the new policy, since we've just had the second reading, H-15, the availability of feminine hygiene products, this policy has not changed at all since the last reading, if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, otherwise, I would ask for a motion to approve. Motion by Mrs. Feather, second by Mrs. Vogel, all in favor? Aye. That passes six to zero, although this is now a policy, there is going to be probably some lag time between the finance department and facilities to order all the necessary equipment and get everything installed, but just so you know, these items are currently available in all of our buildings through the nurse's office. Let's see, next is discussion and/or vote to approve resolutions, Mr. Collins?
Sir, all right, so we have seven resolutions, SCPR dash 09 dash 2824 dash 149 through 155. Before we approve, I asked for the approval, I'm going to ask for a motion to amend, to remove, we're going to table number 151, there were some clarifying questions we didn't have during fiscal subcommittee, so I asked for a motion to, I'm going to make a motion to table STPR dash 09 dash 2024 dash 151.
Second by Ms. Smith, all in favor of removing that? Aye, passes six to zero, Mr. Collins?
And we have six remaining resolutions, SCPI dash 09 dash 2024 dash 149 through 155 minus 151, the six resolutions passed fiscal management subcommittee, three to zero, and I'd move passage to the full committee.
Thank you, Mr. Collins, Mr. Collins made a motion to approve all those resolutions except for the other one, second, second by Mrs. Rogowski, all in favor? Aye, that passes six to zero. Next, the discussion and/or vote to approve payment of bills, Mr. Collins?
We have payment of the bills in the amount of $1,212,340 and, let me start over again. We have payment of the bills in the amount of $1,212,340 and 29 cents, payment of the bills passed fiscal management subcommittee, three to zero, and I'd move passage to the full committee.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve the payment of bills, second by Mrs. Vogel, Vogel. All in favor? Aye, passes six to zero. Next, school committee comments, school liaison reports, who would like to make the comment, Mrs. Rogowski?
I just want to say a quick thank you and congratulations to the entire, everybody involved in opening the new school, and like, opening Ashton and moving community in, and I have to say, those, those locker rooms are like a work of art, it's insane how well they were transformed, so just really, really well done to create classrooms, it's a beautiful space, the kids are really excited, I mean, my daughter's here, she's very excited for the space, so, but just everyone, all the hard work, teachers, staff, administrators to open all of the schools, and then all of the work that went into the actual physical buildings as well, thank you.
Yeah, just an amazing job by all the staff, including, of course, custodians and maintenance, Mr. DeJesus, of course, doing his Herculean tasks of getting everything prepared and ready, and his work isn't over, of course, it's still continuing, so, just very good. Next is a motion for adjournment.
Dr. Thornton?
We do not.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn by Mrs. Feather. Second by Mrs. Rogowski, all in favor? Aye, passes six to zero. We are adjourned at 7:37, thank you, everyone.